Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is July 8th, 2020, approximately 8:02 PM. Again, I welcome everyone to this virtual meeting. We are still not doing live meetings, although we will try to do some form of live and virtual next month. Perhaps part of it will be outdoors with proper social distancing and the rest of it will be virtual. So I hope everyone is well. And again, I welcome you. I call the meeting to order. And we'll stand now as we always do for our slide salute. And Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, my nation through God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd like to have also a moment of silence for five members of the community who have passed away from COVID-related complications. We remember them and our condolences go out to their families. With respect to COVID-19, I'll update the report that I emailed last week to everyone. We have had 65 positive COVID-19 cases historically. At the moment, we have two active COVID-19 cases in DeBorough, and we wish that those infected get better very quickly and fully. The last positive test was on July 4th. Except, we're still practicing social distancing in all borough buildings, gatherings. And as of today, the governor has signed an executive order requiring face masks in public if you are unable to socially distance yourself from other people. Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Andrew.
Here.
Councilwoman Sbarro.
Yeah.
DeBar.
Yeah.
Oh.
Here.
Some.
Here.
Alversa.
Here.
Woo.
Here.
Burris.
Here.
Yehbo.
Here.
Order.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please read into the letter of the open public meeting's act statement?
Out of the previous statements to the press posted as required, made in time of this meeting, the reading given as required by the open public meeting's act. Notice that the following is a quote from House Department of Public Affairs. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of the hearing. Improving reading by law.
Next item on our agenda, which is actually about the borough website, is a borough charity project. We, every month, raise donations, perishable food items for the Office of Concerned Food Pantry in Englewood at St. Cecilia's Church. We do that tonight and tomorrow. If you want to drop anything off at the vestibule of the police department, they come up here and they pick up from us. They're very grateful and thankful, and they really have a large need right now for food items. So if you could spare any or actually even go online and make a donation, that's our project. We always like to do at least one good thing here when we meet every month, and if it's feeding the hungry, that's certainly a very good thing to be doing. We all on council, we serve department, receive department head reports for June 2020. So we've all had a chance to review those. I point out that this Friday, on July 10th, we are having the county send up their mobile testing COVID-19 unit. The borough administrator could give you more details on that. He was also in my email last week. Can you go ahead?
So in conjunction with Bergen New Bridge Medical Center, the county is sending a mobile testing site Friday, July 10th, from 9:30 AM to 30:00 PM. And it starts at the North Cliff School, 704th Street. The first hour is for first responders. After that, from 9:30 to 1:30, it's for residents. You park your car wherever possible, and you walk around to the North Cliff property. If you're taking a saliva test, please leave during the course of your long, 30 minutes before arrival. For those that want to take the antibody test, antibody testing is available for Bergen County first responders, healthcare workers, Bergen County community members who've had a prior COVID-19 positive diagnostic test, who will bring a copy of their test results. Antibody testing is limited to 200 tests a day. So if you have the test before, please bring the results, and you can have the antibody test again. Driver's license, ID card, social security, IV insurance card, if possible.
Thank you. And you could go onto our website if you need to get all that information. It's available there. We did receive one notable item of correspondence, and again, that was from the Office of Concerned Food Pantry thanking us for the prior month's donation. At this point in time, I'd like to open to the public for a public hearing an ordinance 20-05. It's an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48:45.14.
Don't move.
Second.
Is this for questions on the budget, Mayor?
This is for the ordinance.
This is just for
20-05, which is part of the budget, the cap bank.
But this is specifically on the cap bank?
That is correct.
Right. The budget resolution or vote will be next.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone recusing? Okay, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard only on ordinance 20-05, which is the one I just referenced, you could just raise your hand virtually, and we'll call on you if you have any questions. We have our auditors on somewhere. I see them in the corner on my screen. Hi, Steve. You could ask him questions. And then later on, we'll also be opening again for the actual budget to the public, and there'll be a public portion of the meeting where you could discuss any items you wish, including the budget if you want also. So if there's anyone from the public who has any questions on the cap bank ordinance, please raise your hand.
Is this one yet? Is this one ready?
And also, if you're not on video but on a phone, you could just announce yourself if you have any questions at this time. I see quite a few people on the phone on here. Seeing and hearing no one from the public wishes to be heard, have a motion to discuss the public portion.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just joined late. So if anything, I haven't heard anything.
Not open to the public yet.
So whoever just spoke, you'll have an opportunity to speak during the public portion of the meeting, which will probably be in about 10 minutes. We'll recognize you at that time.
We need a motion to adopt 20-05.
Don't move.
Who's that?
DeBar.
I need a second.
Second.
Have a roll call.
Is that 20-05?
Yes. Councilwoman Sbarro.
No.
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Some?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
No.
Thank you. There's a echo here. I'm just going to move over away from the clerk. Get the echo eliminated, I hope. I think this is better. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the 2020 budget adoption. It's resolution 20-101, and this is also a public hearing. Before we open to the public, I'll mention publicly that I oppose this budget for a number of reasons, most importantly of which is there's well over $1 million baked into this budget for lawyers to be paid. And I'm a lawyer, and I love to see lawyers get paid, but I also love to see only one lawyer working on a project and not four, which is the case with our affordable housing litigation. So to me, that's unacceptable. We basically have three people, too many. We only need one litigator on that project right now, and I oppose it for that reason. Having said that, the public
Mayor, point of water.
Come in and have their discussion with us now. Got a motion to open to the public, please.
Mayor, point of water, please. I'd like to make a statement as the finance chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so this year's budget has got quite an increase, well over $2 million. That increase is basically comprised of the fact that we have legal fees in order to move forward with appeal of the Judge Farrington's decision. It's costly to do that. We've spent a lot of money over the years. I have to say that the breakdown is that Tom Trautner, who is our litigator, has gotten over $1 million to date. The master, who we don't control and we are obligated to pay her, has gotten $211,000. Serenian's gotten $742,000. Harbor Consultants, $200,000, I'm rounding. Chris Mahoney, the planning board of the community, $54,000. Capital Advisors, $107,000. Now, if you look at this and you look, you go back to July of 2019, when we decided to move forward with appeal. Since then, from that $1 million that Trautner has gotten so far, $703,000 of that has been incurred after we decided to move forward with the appeal. Serenian, from his $742,000, $440,000 of that was to appeal. Wunsch, from his $264,000, $119,000 of that were the appeal. The rates that these attorneys were getting are $280 an hour for Tom Trautner, $200 for Serenian, and $125 for Al Wunsch. So I just want to clarify, there hasn't been $500,000 paid to affordable housing. It's been $264,000 to date for everything that's been paid by the borough. Now, we also, in this tax budget, we also do not have the assessed value of the LG site. So what you're not seeing here is that approximately, this comes into play in March, so approximately $1 million at the end of the year will be sitting in surplus. So instead of a $2 million increase, it would have been more like a $1 million increase, which basically is the legal fee for tax appeals that are going on right now with the affordable housing. The borough operations is basically remaining. So there is no increase there. We also have $900,000 in emergency appropriations, which basically are to live up to our obligations, our contractual obligations for the retirement of our police officers. So I just wanted to make that clear to the public as to how we arrived there. So it's an increase. It's an increase that you're going to incur to have to move forward with appeal, and that's something that we all, as a council, agreed to do, but it does come with a cost. So that's where we are today, and you can go ahead and open it to the public.
Okay, are you finished? I have one comment to make. You think that Councilwoman Savari used appeal rather than trial. A year ago, we decided to go to trial. The appeal happened this year, and it's my firm opinion, and I've been very firm about this, is that once we went to trial, we did not fight properly. And we didn't fight properly because people in this council tied the hands of certain lawyers from actually being able to do things. Now, I'm going to put that aside for now. The budget is still, despite everything Councilwoman Savari just articulated, it still has a lot of fluff in it because we're hiring Al Wunsch, Tom Trautner, Serenian, and Marinello. They're all billing on affordable housing. Wunsch has no business being in affordable housing litigation. Serenian's work is done. Really just Trautner. Marinello is the borough council. And as Councilwoman Savari just admitted, it's $1 million for lawyers. You don't need all that. And what, we could actually balance this budget if we had to do it the right way.
But I would have to respectfully disagree, Mayor, because if we held together in July and not moved forward with appeal, we'd be in a much better position than we are today. And again, I realize that's not your opinion, but that's mine, and I'll respect yours. You need to respect mine. Thank you.
So having
Thank you. Can we open to the public for questions?
Let me just say this. Yes, you wouldn't have had to pay for a trial, but you have been having to pay for a new school and your fatherhouse, new infrastructure, new school. That's a lot more.
I can't, I, again, we're going in and out, Mayor.
Well, we're going in and out because we have a bad connection, and you're not on video, so I can't tell when you want to speak or not. I just see a picture of you. I really prefer that all council members hit that button on your laptop that says "video" so we can see each other and have a face-to-face conversation the way the public expects us to be able to have a conversation. Okay? Having said that, we'll open to the public.
Mayor, can I make a couple of comments as well? Regarding, I just have a couple of things to add. I think one thing that Councilwoman Savari didn't mention is, you know, when we pay $2 million in fees, we expect a good result. In my mind, the only good result that we've gotten so far is that a shovel hasn't been put in the ground. As part of the process, being someone that's an elected official, I think that we all deserve to be part of that process. Certainly, over the course of this year, plus the $2 million that have been spent, yes, we've gotten some letters back and forth from our council, giving us updates, but, you know, we haven't, we haven't delivered in terms of letting our residents see light at the end of the tunnel with respect to us challenging 800 Sylvan's ability to build.
Thank you, and I agree with you wholeheartedly because we've essentially been excluded since January 2019.
Okay, that is not true. Once again, Mayor, that is absolutely a lie.
That's not what Councilwoman Wu just stated, Mayor. So what part of Councilwoman Wu's statement do you agree with? I mean, you just brought in something like, something that he didn't even touch. So anyway, can we move on?
No, actually, we can't, because this public
Eighty people. They have to write to know that
You are
Happy to be in your responsibilities, Al Wunsch.
That, that is not, that is not the case, and you know that we're not supposed to speak about things in closed session. But you know what? That's okay, Mayor, because we should have settled, and we didn't.
I didn't say we're in closed session.
And we're going to, our attorneys are appealing, and you know that. You've read, read appeals. You personally don't agree with the majority of the council. That's okay. Everybody's entitled to an opinion. We're all elected officials. You need to stop behaving the way you behave to the rest of the council members.
Just for the record, you were the one that just referenced closed session, not me. Okay?
No, actually, you just thought it was Something that happened in closed session.
Thank you. Well, let's open to the public. We need a motion. We need a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, so once again, for members of the public, we're only taking comments right now regarding the 2020 budget adoption. Raise your hand virtually, and we'll recognize you. Yes, Mr. Michalos?
Yeah, Peter Michaelis, 59 Anderson Avenue. Are the attorneys' itemized bills a matter of public record?
Yes, they are. Some of them are redacted if we're in litigation.
Do you see the services that were performed in the itemized bills?
Some of it is redacted.
It depends if we're in current litigation or not. So some of them may be redacted based on where we are with litigation.
Okay. Where can I find those bills?
You can do an Oprah request to the borough clerk.
What kind of request?
An Oprah.
Open?
Oprah.
Oprah?
Yes.
Okay, is that like FISA?
Okay. All right, to the borough clerk. All right, the second question, which is tangential because it has to do with all the fees. Were we to accept the ruling? In other words, not appeal? What exactly would Englewood Cliffs be required to do?
To not litigate, what we would have had to have been committed to infrastructure, building a, add a new school, new firehouse, expanding, possibly the police department as well. So a lot of infrastructure that the developer would not be paying for. And also, Mr. Michalos, in furtherance of what you had
Could you say, I couldn't, could you say that again?
If you Google Al Wunsch's invoices in May of 2020, you will see that over a 20-year period, he billed about 37 hours on affordable housing.
Thirty how much?
Thirty-seven hours over a 48-hour period, which is actually why I get so upset about what's going on with Al Wunsch and with this council.
If I can, please, Mr. Michalos, if, actually, at this point, there is no other direction but to appeal. The court basically has directed us to build 100% affordable housing, and they want us to build 274 units. And that's actually, aside from 800 Sylvan units and the traffic units on the other side of town. So we're in a situation now, or potentially, this could cost anywhere from $20 to $45 million. So we have no choice but to appeal because the settlements that we speak about, the autumn, July, were both with Sylvan and with fair share housing. So now, fair share housing has been awarded all of these units by Judge Farrington, and that's just not going to work. So nobody on this council agrees that this town is capable of building 274 100% affordable housing units. And if you were going to build those and give it to a developer, we would be talking about 2,000 units, which is
Why is that?
Because that's what the judge has ordered, and it's really, it's, you know, an opinion that nobody agrees with, and it's an opinion that we're, and we feel strongly that we'll win on that.
Just as an aside, it's a little disconcerting to see your picture and not your face, but aside from that, I see Councilman O's face, which is refreshing. But anyway, aside from that, it seems we're being punished at every turn, each step. Now, I'm just getting soundbites. I don't have the whole picture, but each soundbite seems to be worse and worse. And it sounds like it's punitive, and I can understand it being punitive. So these numbers, are they real numbers, or are they just smoke that the judge is throwing at us to scare us into doing something that she might approve of, which, which comes to the settlement? One other point on the settlement, it seems the citizens of Englewood Cliffs don't know anything about what the settlement is. I saw a table the other day showing the vacant lots that might be built on. Some of them are on Sylvan Avenue, 9W. Others are right in the middle of residential neighborhoods, one-family house neighborhoods. Not Fort Lee, where you have two-family houses facing each other. Here, potentially, you'd have a one-family house facing across the street, a four-family house, or a strip mall, or God knows what. That's what's annoying, and that's what I think is getting a lot of the citizens of Englewood Cliffs very mad.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a comment, sir.
Well, can I finish explaining how that works, Mayor?
So you had the floor. Let me just make a comment here.
Mr. Michalos.
The judge really went wrong here is that she's not letting us appeal decisions, but she's trying to implement those decisions. So she's waiting until she issues a final decision on the whole matter before she'll let us appeal, but she's basically trying to force us to spend money before we exhaust all our appeals. Now, Mount Laurel stands for a lot of things, but it certainly also provides protection for municipalities like ours, which is that you can't force a municipality to spend money as long as they have a right to appeal. But this judge ignores all that. Now, I don't know why she does that. I don't know why she ignores relevant facts, but she is certainly appealable and will lose on appeal if we do this the right way.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Michalos.
Those properties were always part of the calculation for our RDP. So it's not like this is new, or this is a particular punishment. This is the way the RDP is calculated. It's calculated based on vacant land. So when
What's RDP?
An RTP is our realistic development plan. And it's, it's how they calculate what the town potentially should be building, and it's based on vacant land. And the reason why we're at this point is because the judge has turned around and said, well, you should have built affordable, you should have changed the zoning on the new LG property, and it should have been available for developers to come in and do high-density housing, which would accomplish affordable housing at the same time. That didn't happen, and we have LG today. Okay? We're basically, although the judge says that she's not punishing us, it appears to be a punishment that she is saying that now, because we didn't do that, we have to build 274 units of affordable housing. I totally agree with the mayor in the sense of, it's ridiculous. Like, that just doesn't make any sense whatsoever. It's being appealed. I, just like the mayor, believes that very strongly that we would win that on appeal. But you have to remember, even though the number of what we call our unmet need, it's 584 units for this town, sounds a little crazy, but that's what the number is.
I'm sorry, that number was calculated using the RDP?
Your RDP is a basis of your vacant land in town. So if you don't have vacant land, you don't have a realistic development plan. But you can have overlay zones on property that could potentially be residential properties. So right now, Englewood Cliffs is mostly corporate properties. So we wound up here today because the corporate developer at 800 Sylvan said, I am going to throw my, my property into the pot, and I'm going to put residential, and I'm going to give you 20% affordable housing.
Let me, let me try to
No.
Back to the budget discussion because
Okay, you're right. You're right. I, Mr. Michalos, I would be more than happy to have a discussion with you offline about how things are calculated. It's
That's fine.
Quite a lengthy conversation.
I'm sure, given this evening's later opportunity to have a public discussion more, more broad than the budget, this will come up again. But right now, I need to actually stick with the agenda, which is to follow But right now, I need to actually stick with the agenda, which is to follow on to the budget. Can we have our auditor available? I know he's always happy to explain to me all the questions I have regarding emergencies and excess legal fees and all that. But is there anyone else in the public with any questions regarding the budget? I thank you, Mr. Mikolos, for your questions also.
You're welcome.
I see Ms. McMorro's got a question. Ms. McMorro?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Put your name and address, please.
Carol McMorro, 489 Summit Street. I just want to clear up something that Ms. Sabari stated in regards to Al Wunsch's bills. I'm only going to give you the first three months of his vendor history, which is January, February, and March. He has two sets of bills, which Ms. Sabari interestingly left out of her breakdown. The numbers that were quoted at the last meeting for what he was paid were correct. But you have to look at everything he's being paid for. So for January, he was paid a total of $35,462.50. $14,962.50 was for everything outside of affordable, and affordable $20,500. For February, the breakdown was $13,262.50, plus separately $11,100, for a total of $24,362.50. March, he was paid for the two sets, affordable and non-affordable issues, $20,325. So right there, and I'm just giving you rough numbers just for three months, you're talking about over $80,000. We're in July. The numbers are obscene of what he's being paid. And in the history of my looking at invoices, and I've been doing that since I've been on council the first time, I've never seen an attorney ever be paid what Al Wunsch is being paid for items, I'm not even looking at affordable housing, for everything else. It's, it's, it's my opinion, it's a waste of money. Why he's doing it, I have no idea. The Democrats who appointed him would have to answer that because they have other attorneys being duplicative. I'm talking about a budget, she's interrupting me, Mayor.
I'm interrupting you because, first of all...
The resident has the floor. You'll have an opportunity to rebut after.
And Mayor, you run the meeting. Ms. Sabari has to understand to follow Robert's rules of...
If you were my question...
Ms. Sabari, please let the resident finish her questions.
It wasn't a question, it was a statement, Mayor.
You'll have the floor right after her to rebut.
You just cut off the other resident because it wasn't about the budget. So...
I think Al Wunsch's bill is part of the budget, right?
No, that was not.
Please let the resident finish, please.
Mayor, I am talking about the budget. I'm citing for the three months that were paid out of this year's budget, which is almost $85,000 just for three months, and the excessive amounts that are being paid to the lawyers. I am absolutely speaking about the budget. And I'm also asking...
$5,000. I have the numbers.
Please let the resident finish.
Mayor, she's not allowed to yell out, or to raise her hand, and has to be recognized. She continually wants to have every single meeting.
Yeah, and I told her, and everybody heard me tell her, that she could rebut whatever you're saying after, and you're bringing up some very good points along with the mention of the two days in May where Al Wunsch...
But Mayor, why are you responding? Why are you responding? Al Wunsch in page seven.
Please let the resident finish.
You can't mute me.
Please let the resident finish.
Thank you, Mayor. So if, this is not for a back and forth, and if Ms. Sabari wants to speak with me offline, like she offered the other resident that opportunity, I'd be more than happy to speak to her. But if she's going to keep interrupting me after I...
I will speak with you. I will speak with you offline, as long as you don't record it.
All right, please let the resident finish.
That's really inappropriate, Mayor. I mean, I'm just...
All right, let's stay focused. She wants to not have you be focused.
Okay. As I said, for those three months alone, it's about $80,000, and then obviously, we have, you know, we're in July right now. And any, I saw Mr. Mikolos wants to know those, just put a vendor history request through Oprah, and you can get those numbers. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Sabari, would you like to rebut?
No, I'm not going to do that.
Mayor, I have a comment also, just, you know, let's keep in mind, I want the residents to also know, Mr. Wunsch is a single-person firm, to our knowledge. There's no other associates working on this. The, the, the sort of firepower there, and on top of that, just, to my knowledge, no previous experience on affordable housing. So it just, it's, it's insensible to me how we've spent the kind of money we've had, we've spent on Al, who, you know, who's, you know, unfortunately, he's a resident in town, he's a neighbor to all of us, but this is, this is not right, in my opinion.
Yes, I agree. He's a quintessential political appointee, there to do only one thing, which is to obstruct you, me, and Carol from being able to participate.
That is, that is not correct, Mayor.
Yeah, and you know, on top of that, being assaulted by him is not, you know, what I like to have done to me either.
That's not what happened, and you know it.
Yeah, all right. Anybody else wishing to be heard, please? If there's anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard, you could also just take yourself off mute, and, well, actually, we should take everyone off who's on the phone. I don't think they can do that.
Sure.
For everyone who's on the phone, we've just taken you off mute. Make sure that if you have any questions or comments regarding the budget only, that you could...
It doesn't, it's...
Okay, speaking here, no one. Then I have a motion.
There's a lot going on.
Members of the public, if you could please mute yourselves, and we will allow you to speak if you raise the little hand icon, but the feedback we're getting is not positive as far as the sound effects. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I don't see any icons with the hand raised.
I see an actual hand.
Oh, an actual hand, okay.
Mitch Kapsaskis. How are you? Mitch Kapsaskis, 251 Alfred Street. Going to the budget, you know, we're talking about all the money we're spending, and the name Al Wunsch is obviously the person that's being talked about most. Single-man operation, as William just mentioned, Mr. Wu just mentioned. I'd be curious to know, as a informal question to each of the council people, how many of you can say right now that you are happy with the job Albert Wunsch has done for us to date? Can you tell the public that's here listening that you are happy with what he's done for us and the money he's charged us?
I'm very happy with the job he's done for us. He was essential in working on our settlement agreement, which, again, I'm going to state, he should have did. But that being said, yes, I think Al is essential, and I think he's done a good job, and I think the attorneys that I'm working with will agree with that statement.
Well, you know, fifty thousand...
Again, that would be my opinion, Mayor.
Yeah, but he ran obstacle course for you, obstructed me, and Luke.
You keep saying that. You can say as much as you like, but that doesn't make it true.
We didn't even need to be negotiating a settlement until you popped it out one day as a memorandum of understanding.
That's not true, Mayor, and you know it.
That's absolutely true.
If, not true.
I only, I only have one comment. If we settled, we probably, the town would have probably broken ground on 800 Sylvan already.
And what everyone misses, you know, is...
That's right. We would have had more.
They always want more. Whatever you settle for is never going to be enough for them.
Well, you, you can continue, you were a train of thought. The judge was, basically, he was not very happy with you, Mayor, and honestly...
No, of course she's not happy with me.
I don't think she's...
She has to follow the rules.
I don't think she's being fair, Mayor. Okay? The question was, for the resident, the question was, how, what our opinion is. It's not a budget question, but I answered it anyway.
Okay, how about, if I, if I may, how about the rest of the council members? If I can hear from them, if they're all happy with Mr. Wunsch's work to date?
Mr. Kapsaskis, I am not just making my statement not happy with the work. He's provided, I've had very limited, if any, interaction with Mr. Wunsch. You know, like I said earlier, the process, how much we paid him and the rest of the legal team, the $2 million, I just haven't seen any good work product and good result. Ultimately, you know, we still have to look at the result as well. The only result I mentioned is that they haven't broken ground yet.
Councilwoman O, Councilwoman Song, Councilman Versa, Councilwoman Song, Councilman Versa.
So I was not, I was not part of the Affordable Housing Committee. Hi, do I have the floor there?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I was not part of the Affordable Housing Committee initially. You know, the committee consists of three people. I believe Mr. Wunsch was instrumental in, in, in communicating with certain people, trying to see if there could be any type of settlement. And I do believe that he brought, you know, things to the table that other attorneys were not able to do so. So yes, I do, I am pretty happy with his services, to answer your question.
And I'd just like to, Quayle, I'm sorry, go ahead, Quayle.
And the rate that, you know, we're paying Mr. Wunsch is $125 an hour, and compared to the other attorneys, it's significantly lower. And, you know, he does bring things to the table in terms of, you know, settlement discussions.
I don't think you could say, we're paying somebody little per hour, and therefore, all the bad decisions that he's making along the way...
No, Mayor, I didn't say that, and you're putting words in my mouth. I didn't say that just because we're paying him a lower rate that, you know, I'm trying to justify his services. That's not what I'm saying.
You're just saying he's being paid lower than others, just hourly rate.
Yeah, and, and he does bring, you know, things to the table. That's the point.
Gloria, he actually billed 37 hours over a 48-hour period, and so you're not saving any money, it's just that he's overbilling you, like giving you a terrible product as it is. Let's face it, Gloria Ed.
Answer the gentleman's question.
Let's face it, the reason why you want Ed Wunsch there is because he's running interference.
If I were you, Mayor, I...
He's blocking everything for you guys. So you could actually say, well, we don't...
Mayor, why are you muting the council people?
Because they're yet to talk it out, and everybody gets their chance.
You know what? Don't mute me when I'm speaking, Mayor. I would be very cautious about you calling certain people of the council certain names without facts, okay?
There's no name calling. I'm just telling you that you are getting ripped off. Now, why would people put up with getting ripped off by...
Okay, Mayor, Mayor, enough. But let's just move on. You're wasting the public's time. The gentleman wants to hear from the council people. We're answering...
Mr. Kapsaskis asked a good question, I'm sorry.
Right, let us answer, and stop interrupting.
No, I'm not interrupting.
Jimmy Song would like to speak too. You're interrupting.
I'm just not used to Jimmy Song saying anything, so I'm going to stop talking, Jimmy. I love to hear...
You know, because I don't have nice things to say to you, Mayor, okay?
Okay.
And that's the reason why I try not to say things...
But you never have anything...
In front of the public.
Okay, go ahead, Jimmy. Who do you want to say?
Okay.
Okay, stop it, Mayor.
I want to, no. Mayor, I'll talk to you outside this meeting, okay? But you disrespect every person in the closed sessions, and I'm sick of it, okay? And I feel bad for the public. I really do.
So you're not really saying anything other than sharing your feelings? But give us some facts.
Oh yeah, that's my feelings. Those are my feelings, okay?
Councilman Song, how do you feel about Wunsch, Al Wunsch? Let's talk about that.
So Al Wunsch, to me, is instrumental, okay? And it's not because of his experience in affordable litigation. Arguably, he does not have that experience, but he's familiar with Bergen County, he's familiar with the judges, and he's a good negotiator, okay? Do I, I don't want to say I'm happy, we're not doing well in court, but that's not indicative of Al's performance. I believe he has the right acumen, he has trial experience, and he's done a good job for him. So I feel like he has a home-court advantage. The other attorneys are not from Bergen County, so I feel like he does bring a lot to the table. And I'm sorry I lost my cool, but this past two weeks...
No, it's okay.
Excuse me, excuse me, let me talk.
Go ahead.
The mayor is continuing to waste taxpayer money, and I'm sick of it, and I try to, you know, be a gentleman about it, but...
Well, thank you.
I've been sued how many times? Maybe three or four times? I lost count, okay?
Let me ask you a question, Jimmy.
No, no, you're not asking me questions. I have the floor, so...
Finish.
I'm sorry, I, I lost my cool here. I generally am a pretty calm person, but the mayor is getting on my nerves.
Okay. Well, that's good, because here's, here's why I'm getting...
No, no, it's not good, because you're wasting people's time, you're disrespecting the council, and I got to say something, okay? And a lot of people know me, and I would not speak up like this unless it bothers me this much.
Okay, well, while you're being...
And your actions bother me, sir, okay?
You just said that you hired a lawyer, and you're standing by him with, who has no affordable housing experience, and there has never been a more important issue in the 125-year history of this town, and you are standing behind a guy who you just admitted has no experience in affordable housing litigation. Thank you, Jimmy.
He's working, no, no. He has a team that he worked with, and you're destroying it.
Mayor, you are so good at twisting facts, okay, and putting words in other people's mouths, okay? We, Al Wunsch is not the litigator on affordable housing matters. We have another lawyer for that. Al Wunsch's role is not to litigate. And you just said, he has no experience, and he, you know, he, he doesn't litigate affordable housing. You and I, we both know that. That's not his role. So don't feed bad information to the public.
But Gloria, he's billing us for affordable housing matters.
Yeah, but not for litigation, not for litigation, Mayor, and you know that.
He's involved in everything, okay?
He's not the litigator. We have another front for that.
We have our professionals waiting to, to vote on the budget. Do we have any budget questions?
A question for you all. Why would you have somebody with no experience, who's also politically connected to the former administration, be involved at all?
Actually, he's not politically connected.
Be involved at all.
I don't even know how you could say that.
Of this town, for 125 years, there's never been a more important issue, okay? And you appointed him, and you are sticking by his side, and you are wasting the town's money, and you are throwing the town down the drain with him.
And we are going to say it again, Mayor. He was brought on board to negotiate. He's also the town historian and brings a lot to the table about the history of this town, and I'm sure you could learn a lot from him. So you need to...
I would have expected him to...
You need to respect our opinions. We are the majority council. We all feel that he is incremental in this whole procedure. So I understand you disagree with me, and I respect that, but we need to move on because this really is about the budget and...
I agree, but you also said that because he has no experience, but because he's a town historian, we could entrust life-saving...
I did not say he has no experience, Mayor. He is an excellent negotiator. He's also worked for this town, and he had a lot of lawsuits that we had when he came in, which had nothing to do with affordable housing.
Yeah, he paid a corrupt police, he took $100,000 that you approved.
You know what, Mayor? You're just, you're just, you're unbelievable.
Can I answer, can I interject one more time? If I can, just to get back...
It's easy to settle things when you're dealing and spending other people's money.
Please let the resident speak. Let the resident speak.
I just, I don't know, I believe Councilman Pharaoh and Councilman Versa, I don't know if you're there, I can't tell, but... I can't tell, but do you have opinions on Mr. Wunsch as well?
I just think if the mayor's. Go ahead, Ramon, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention that Al Wunsch was hired by the Democrat majority, which they have the control of the council. I don't think we need him, he doesn't have the experience for this kind of work. And I think he's charging a ridiculous amount of money. And we tried to fire him one time, which we were able to get rid of him, but the Democrat majority rehired him back. And that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Councilman Versa, you were going to say something, sir?
Oh, I just want to say, Ariel, do you think that fraudulent or unethical? I think you should file charges instead of make accusations. If you really feel that strongly about it, I think you should do that. But if you don't, if it's just, if it's just political propaganda, then I think you should stop. Mitch, as far as your question goes, I think that, let me finish, Mario. So, because then you can talk after I'm done, it's okay. So as far as what I think Al Wunsch brings, I think he brings a lot of things that other attorneys can. You know, whether you guys value that or not is up to you, of course, and if you don't like that, that's certainly a prerogative. It's, I can't speak for everyone else, but I think he's worth $125 an hour. And again, I'll point back to the mayor, if you think there's any fraudulent or ethical activity, unethical activity, which you're accusing him of, then I think you should either stop it or proceed and bring him up on charges. That's up to you, I don't see that, but that's your call.
We tried to have an investigation, and you voted.
No, 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 not on Al Wunsch. So if you think he's, there's a separate, a separate field for that, you know it, you're an attorney. You can, let me finish, Mario, let me finish.
Well, tell me when you're finished.
If you think there's any unethical, there's a bar association that you can bring him up on. There's certainly many venues in your professional field that can bring up those things that you're accusing him of. So please, if you're going to, I think you should stop it or go ahead and proceed with it. But I think the innuendos you're bringing up are not fair. I think you're bringing the public up, it's just my opinion, Mario, you don't have to agree with it. And I think you should, you should either bring it, if it's a fact, then go ahead, there's a point for that.
48-hour period, okay, that's a Guinness Book of World Record for lawyers. I've been practicing law for 30 years, okay? I've never seen anyone bill like that.
You just keep, who?
True, you mentioned that he brings a lot to the table that other lawyers don't bring. So please, educate me.
If you think it's fraudulent, if you think it's fraudulent or unethical, please bring up that charge at the bar association, I know you're aware of that.
One last, one last question before we, before I say thank you. Who, if anybody, reviews Al Wunsch along with everybody else's legal team's bills? Is there a specific person on the council who reviews their bills in a greater detail, hours, where the money goes?
The entire council has that permission, Mitch, it's not just one person. It's the council, the mayor of council as a whole, okay? We all have that authority.
It's also the borough administrator, but Ed, I just want to ask you, you said that Al Wunsch brings a lot to the table that other lawyers don't. So please educate me.
I think you heard, and I agree with Jimmy, I agree with Gloria, about the things he brings in from a local level and a, you know, an argumentative level that other people can't bring. So I, listen, you don't have to agree with it, that's just my opinion, I'm not an attorney, but that's my feeling.
Well, explain it to me, what do you mean when you say?
I just did.
Okay, Mario, please.
Local level means?
You have our professionals here to answer questions.
No, no, but Ed said something.
It's okay, Debbie, it's okay. Listen, Mario, I answered your question, if it's not adequate for you, I feel, I'm sorry for you, but that's the answer I have for you. So if you want to keep fishing, I'll get you hooked in some line, and you could go fishing somewhere else.
So Mr. Kipaskis, I appreciate your questions.
Thank you very much.
Jimmy told us he has no experience, Ed told us he knows everything local, somebody else said he's a historian, and we are entrusting.
Okay, Mayor, you're just, you're politicking now.
We're entrusting the most important decision of this town to Al Wunsch. Because I assure you that the four Democrats on council have abdicated their responsibilities and are letting him run wild again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, could you state your name?
Ms. Maimon, 197 Pershing Road.
Thank you.
So just, I'm listening to everything, I'm just a little confused, so. So is Mr. Wunsch's purpose, is he, is he like an attorney for affordable housing? Or is he not an affordable housing attorney? What is he litigating for us?
Mario, Mayor, can we please finish with the budget hearing and then open to the public for all these other questions that are being asked?
We will, I thought Ms. Maimon's question was relating to the budget, since it's, again, addressing Al Wunsch, he's not an affordable housing attorney, okay?
So then, why is, why are we talking about him in this budget question?
Well, because his billing is so high, and my point was that we don't need four law firms working on the affordable housing matter, we only need one. Because right now, it's over a million dollars of attorney fees being allocated to the affordable housing litigation matter. And he's one of them. And my view is, Ramon Pharaoh's view and William Lu's view is that we should not be having four attorneys do this, especially people who aren't even well-versed in affordable housing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it, anybody else? Oh, I see, Mr. Bay? Mr. Bay?
Yes, hi, thank you. One quick question, this is sort of related to the budget, so I'm not trying to.
Address, please.
14 Pershing Road, Engle Cliffs.
Thank you.
This is related to the budget, so I'm not trying to drag on this Mr. Wunsch's issue. I believe someone noted that for the first three months of the year, he was paid, what, $85,000? Someone come from that one? And if he's being paid $125 an hour, that's 680 hours that he's billed in three months. So 680 hours divided by, say, call it 13 weeks in three months, that's 52 hours a week he's billed. He's working full-time and overtime for us, what is he doing? That's what I like to know. Because if he's billing 50 hours plus, let's call it, he's got expenses, he's got travel, and we cover for that because he works for us, but he's still working effectively full-time, 40 hours a week, and that's what he's been building up. So what is his value added if he's working full-time on this? Does he do any other, does he take on any other case? Does he render any other legal services besides working for town officials?
Mr. Bay, I don't know what he does, I know he's actually shown up in courts defending motor vehicle infractions, where he's actually representing.
Shame on you, Mayor, shame on you.
No, no, he's actually, he's actually representing people against the town in other matters, and I found out in a traffic court.
That's not true, if you're going to make allegations, you better substantiate that.
I have.
And that's not what you do. You throw stuff out there to confuse the public and to throw them away, that's not true. Can we have an answer to the question, please?
Yes.
Look at the court document.
No, no, no one's through.
Yeah, I, you know, there's been some comments, Mr. Bay, that he doesn't work on the litigation. When I went to court, and I wasn't there often, I admit that, but I was, I did go to court and check it out, he was there with our litigator, so for them, for anyone to say he's not involved in the litigation at all, from my perspective, it's just simply not true.
Yeah, but how is he able to bill us on the average 40 hours plus, basically full-time every week? Does he work 40 hours per town, what does he do for 40 hours a week?
You know, I don't have those bills in front of me that the mayor's referring to, but you're more than welcome to open them, and you can question that at the next meeting, or you can call, and I'll get answers to that. But right now, I don't have that answer for you. So right now, our budget has $1,335,000 for affordable housing, and that doesn't include all the other litigation going on, because you know, this town has a ton of opers that get filed, and there's a lot of work going on that is also costing us a lot of money. But for the particular, this particular budget, we got $1,335,000 for affordable housing. Last year, we spent $2 million and change. So the hope is, is that we're not going to need to go for an emergency appropriation to come up with more money for legal fees down the road, because we've hit our max in our budget. So right now, Mr. Wunsch is working on particular things, whether it's negotiation and working with our affordable housing attorneys. The bulk of our cost is coming from Serenian and Troutner. That's what it is, that's what's in the budget. So as far as bills for this current year and what they were for, I don't have that in front of me, so I couldn't answer that for you, but I will.
Well, council, the bar is going to be building right now to cut that budget by cutting the attorneys who are working on that litigation.
We couldn't possibly cut that less than $1,335,000.
I think that Al Wunsch is negotiating, I don't know what he's negotiating, but I don't agree with it.
Actually, if we would, if we potentially could do anywhere near what we had in July of 2019, this town would be much better off than where we are today. That's my opinion.
I thought at the last Zoom meeting, we had agreed not to.
I don't know who's talking.
Mr. Bay is talking.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, the.
Is it Bay or?
Thanks for the comment on the, on the information, Councilwoman, is he? I asked the question because someone mentioned the $85,000 number through March, and it, and we kept talking about how cheap his hourly rate is. But if you think about how we're being billed as a taxpaying resident, I want to make sure that my tax money goes to a, you know, is spent most efficiently.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I will get you an answer. We had a lot of, we had a lot of work going on in our answers to the court and with our appeal. Considerations, I mean, there's a bunch of legal terminology that I may not be on top of the actual terminology, but a lot of work has gone into our briefs that have gone into the court. And it is my understanding from the attorneys that Mr. Wunsch is instrumental in helping them with this, and he is also working hand in hand on trying to see what other avenues we may be able to go down to try to save this town from what's going on right now. Because this is really bad.
I just leave with the, just one comment, because when we did this a few weeks ago, I think we sort of, everyone sort of agreed to work together towards getting to a place where we would like to get to, as opposed to arguing over what may or may not have taken place in the past. But everyone's repeating this again, if that goes to everyone. So I'd like to see more sort of constructive discussion taking place, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with questions or comments regarding the budget? I don't see any, so can I motion to close the public portion?
No moves.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Gloria, can we now have a motion to approve the budget?
No moves.
By the way, I oppose this budget, the council can do whatever it wants.
I already made the motion.
Second.
Councilperson Pharaoh?
Is that 101?
Yes.
No.
Savari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yep, yes.
Woo?
No.
It passes, Mayor.
Thank you. For approval, I had questions.
Questions and issues with the closed session minutes?
No, we can't discuss it publicly. All the closed session ones until we could actually discuss those privately.
I need to get these approved.
I made a motion to approve all the minutes, I read them, they seem pretty good, I'm good with them, I don't have any problem with them.
All right, well, then I'm just going to.
Second that.
I'm just going to oppose all the closed session meeting minutes.
Well, if we get to a tie, Mario, you could vote, until then, it's not up to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Aversa, for explaining that, but I just wanted to actually make the record clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's a first and a second, can we vote?
Councilman Savari, did you move a minute?
Yep.
Listen, hold on. I moved them, Debbie seconded them.
Yep.
Okay. Councilperson Pharaoh?
The only ones that I can vote is the 2020, and I say no.
No to all?
Yes.
And the regular minutes from 2020?
Yeah, 2020, that's what I'm talking about.
You're voting no on 2020?
Yes, I can vote on 2019.
Okay, but you're voting yes on 2020?
No.
Savari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes, to the 2020 regular caucus and special meeting abstaining on February 1, 2019, closed, I was not there. No.
One second, Councilman, abstaining in February?
February 1, 2019, I wasn't present at the meeting. And no, and no to 2/11 and 2/13, closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, before we go into the public portion, I just want to, again, bring up an old resolution from the July 10 meeting, which I'd like to add for the, for the resolutions to be passed. The meeting, the resolution that I wanted to add was regarding, you know, certain current council members, as well as former council members on affordable housing. Last time I made this motion, the borough attorney, Joe Marinello, had his associate going in to opine on whether folks were conflicted. The borough attorney, Phil Inzey from Bonica, he wasn't clear that night, and it was stated that we could vote on it again if there were any issues. There's a lot, there's clouds surrounding that vote, and I'd like to bring that to a vote again. The name of the resolution is authorizing investigation of Gloria O., Edward Aversa, Deborah Savari, Jimmy Song, and Ellen Park relating to the borough's affordable housing litigations in Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 611915, and 800 Sylvan versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 6918, and A 4019172, and other related matters. I'm going to pass over all the wherewiths, because I read that last time on July 10. I'm just going to read the resolve portion for the public. Now, therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of Englewood Cliffs, county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, that the mayor be and hereby is authorized and empowered to retain, to retain a, sorry, is an empowered A to retain special independent counsel. uh, to retain a, sorry, to, is empowered a to retain special independent council having investigatory experience to investigate the actions and omissions of O., Aversa, Savari, Sung, and E. Park relating to the communications and litigation strategy. B, to provide the governing body with a report of his or her findings. And C, to take all necessary and appropriate legal actions, including but not limited to the payment of reasonable attorney fees to assert any of the borough's rights as outlined in the report. So, um, I want to raise that for us to, uh.
Is that a motion?
Hold on.
So, you made a motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Then we have a vote.
Okay, uh, point of order, Mayor? Billy, you sure you want to, you want to stick with that wording to your, your resolution there? Yes. Okay.
It's identical to the one from last month.
Didn't, didn't we?
No, no, no. Let, let him make the motion. Let him do it.
Wait, Bill. So, so again, once again, Bill, you're following the, the mayor's, um, uh, instructions to bring this up again.
No, I'm not.
No, let me finish. I have the floor. You, you, you could have an opportunity to speak after I'm done, okay? So, as you know, Bill, the mayor is suing the four Democrat council members, okay, on exactly on that motion, okay, along with, um, us pre, uh, being, not, not being able to vote on the affordable housing matters. It's at the court.
Actually, this, this was ruled on today by Judge Farrington. And, uh, it was very clear that a hearing date was set for August 8, I believe. And she did not allow for you to, uh, to overturn our vote, which is what you asked for, Mario.
Now, there's a hearing on that.
There will be a hearing on that particular portion of.
Right.
Nothing else. And so, we cannot vote on that again. It should not be on the agenda.
William made a motion.
No.
Why?
It's not, it's not, you can't, there is a lawsuit pending right now.
Doesn't matter.
Yes, it does matter. Yes, it does matter, Mario.
Make a vote.
You know what, Mario, as much as, as much as you can give us options as to what to do, it, this is not, this is not necessary, and you can't have this motion again. We have a lawsuit. You sued us. You're going to cost the taxpayers of this town more money, okay? Because we have to be represented.
Their actions are gonna cost them a lot of money, but there's a motion made. Uh, Councilman Faro, did you second it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you, you, now you're coaching, uh, Councilman Faro to second the motion. Look at you. You're saying, you're, you're pulling strings on everybody.
Okay.
No, he, he seconded before you said anything.
Michael, it's not your turn to be involved in this, Mr. Michaelos. Let me just understand what's happening. Is this a motion to add the, the resolution to the agenda?
There's a motion being made.
To add the resolution to the agenda, right? Am I understanding that right, Bill?
There's a motion being made exactly identical to last month where you're.
Stop muting me.
Why are you speaking for Bill, Mayor? Why are you speaking for Bill? It's clear that you're coaching him.
I don't know why you're yelling at me, but.
What's he saying?
I don't know why you're yelling at me. I just want to explain.
Why, why don't you be the man and say that this is coming from you? And you don't pull the string on Bill Wu.
We're a team, okay? We, we want to do the best thing possible for Englewood Cliffs.
You're a team and you're suing us. You're a team and you're suing us. That makes sense. That is a pro of sense.
You should not have voted last month when you did because you're.
You know what? You know what?
Judge doesn't agree with you, so he needs to stop dumping the gun.
Point of order, please. Point of order.
We are in the middle of a vote.
Okay. We have to understand what you're voting on. I just want, I think I made it clear, and I think Bill agreed with me.
You're trying to make a decision here.
No, no, I'd like to, let's, I'd like to take a vote.
Stop, stop muting me, Mr. Mayor.
We are in the middle of a.
Stop muting me, Mr. Mayor.
Being removed if you continue interrupting.
You can't remove me, Mr. Mayor. You can't remove me. You can't remove me. You can't remove me.
What are we voting on?
Take a vote right now.
There is no vote. There is no vote, Mayor.
That was just read.
The vote is to add the resolution to the agenda.
No, that's not the vote.
No, the, the motions were made and Ramon seconded it, so.
Take the vote.
Which was what, Bill?
You can't, you can't have a vote on the resolution that you haven't handed to any of us.
You had it last month.
I can, um, I can share.
You had it last month either.
Share the screen right now if me think, if you just give me access to share.
The what?
That's not a way.
I can share my screen with everybody.
Okay, Billy, you know that this exact resolution is in the court's hands right now. It's going to be heard as to whether we can vote or not in August. And she did not.
The resolution is, the resolution, um, I, I read, I read what the, the judge issued. They said that she would hear it on July 20.
No, she was not hearing.
That's the wrong date.
We have to have our answers in by July 20. This is ridiculous.
You have, you have a motion?
We can vote. We can vote.
Robert's rules. I'm putting everyone on mute. We're following Robert's rules, okay? And Robert's rules say when there's a motion made, which has been made, and there's a second, there's a vote. And I'm directing the clerk once again to take a vote.
Now, Mayor, I'm going to rely on the opinion of the borough attorney. During the right, during the caucus, I said that the only change that was being made, and I reminded you, was to remove, no, was to remove ordinance 2006. At that point, with all due respect, Councilman Wu, you should have stated that you were wanting to add.
We've had other motions made in the middle of meetings.
No, actually, no, we haven't. You haven't allowed.
I am directing the clerk to take a vote. If she won't do it, I will.
You can't do it.
Mayor, Mayor, this is why, this is why our town has so many lawsuits. You just complained about.
Listen, there's a motion pending.
He's muting council people again.
There's a motion pending, and the clerk needs to do her job.
I am doing my job.
No, I am directing you to take a vote. Mr. Marinello is not an elected official. He doesn't get to do what he's doing.
And you're not the king of Englewood Cliffs.
No, I'm not.
Stop acting like a king.
Trying to see that the rule of law and order is restored in this town.
What a problem.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Mar.
Mr. Marinello, you must let the vote happen. You don't have any control to stop this vote. You may.
I can only advise you. I can only advise you, Mr..
Mr. Marinello, you're only elected down in Edgewater or wherever you play.
I don't get elected there either. I get appointed just like here.
You're not elected here. I am the executive of this town. I am directing the clerk to take a vote.
Do you, why don't you show up with the crown on your head?
That was made by, we don't need.
Mute it again.
We don't need this. You're not only getting, you're getting removed.
Do not remove. Okay, now we don't have, now we don't have our borough attorney.
Well, he's disrespectful to the mayor.
Okay, if, if he doesn't come back, Mario, I suggest we end the meeting now.
No.
Yes. We don't have a borough attorney to advise us, Mario. I suggest it, and.
I know it's uncomfortable for you guys, but this is.
Mr. Mayor.
You muted me again, Mario. You muted me again. I can't believe it.
And, and the council has to vote right now. The clerk.
No, we don't.
Is our borough attorney on or not?
I don't know where he is, but he.
Then we're not continuing the meeting until that happens.
Come back. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor. He may not be able to come back.
Mario, that's the third time you eliminated an attorney tonight. Third time.
No, no.
Yes.
This is. When the lawyer has to put up with the attorney that you put after me, I'm not going to put up with that.
I'm not going to put up with this. I'm not going to put up with you.
The lawyers that.
Give away my rights as a house person to speak.
There's a motion that was made by Councilman Wu. It needs to be voted on. And I expect the clerk right now to do her job, take a roll call.
You can't do that, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, so if the motion doesn't carry, are you going to sue us again?
Keep that motion just the way you said it.
Answer my question. Are you going to sue us again if the motion doesn't carry? Just like the last time? You're gonna keep suing us?
That's the problem, right? You're conflicted and voting on it.
You keep suing us, and you're costing the taxpayers money. How do you explain that? Why don't you try explaining that, okay? And, and stop complaining about other legal bills. You're costing the town money big time.
Invite Marinello back.
Invite him back. Booming him out. You can't.
And then you admit that you kicked him out.
I kicked him out because I'm the mayor. That, that happened.
Oh, you're the mayor. Yeah, you're the mayor. That's great.
Yeah, no, voters know their rules, right? They should know their place here.
That's who we rely on to give us our, if you don't like it, that's.
He's not.
Are you a lawyer?
There's supposed to be a vote 10 minutes ago on this. And there still isn't a vote because you want to listen to a lawyer who's aligned with you.
On the agenda.
Councilman.
We're still going to vote no.
Mr. Marinello, are you on the call? Mr. Marinello?
Take the vote. We don't need.
Mayor, I need a legal opinion. It was not added. Yes, I do.
No, I am, under NJSA 4860-5.
My God.
I am directing you, just the powers of the mayor, to take a vote right now.
I need a.
Take a vote.
Stop pulling the clerk, Mayor.
And it's something that you all aren't used to following.
Mario, I'm going to tell you, as a councilperson, I make a motion to end the meeting unless you bring the, uh, our council, who advises us on our, on these matters, back in the meeting. I'm not, I'm not.
Second that motion.
Second.
Motion pending. You can't do another motion.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, there's another motion pending.
You're all dysfunctional. There's another motion pending, and we have to vote on that.
Well, you don't have a borough attorney to advise us.
We don't need a borough attorney.
A motion to end the meeting.
We don't need a borough attorney because the borough attorney is not an elected official.
Yeah, because we're going to rely on your advice, Mario? That's not happening.
Bulldog, okay? That's all he is, and we don't need him.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so.
You don't need your mayor.
Honestly, the clerk has been insubordinate right now because he's not.
Um, Mario, I'm just telling you, I'm not going to sit in the meeting without legal counsel.
We have to have a vote on what.
Mario, we can't, we can't.
We're not voting without our borough attorney.
Without our council. We can't, we can't, we can't carry on with the meeting without our attorney.
Well, listen.
You admitted you kicked him out, Mario. That's your, that's on you.
Either you bring him back, or we have to adjourn the meeting.
That's it.
You can adjourn the meeting.
Are you bringing him back, or we leaving?
You can leave whenever you want, please. Okay.
No, you cannot continue the meeting without our borough.
Mayor, reach out to the council and you bring him back in.
Well, listen, well, here's something for you. When the borough attorney learns to be respectful of the mayor, then he'll come back in.
Okay, okay, Donald. Listen, in the meantime, bring him back in the meeting or we end it.
Bring him back in.
Yeah, okay.
But I am not going to put up with your bulldogs coming after me and you hiding behind them, okay? I will not put up with that. The people of Englewood Cliffs deserve better than that, okay? We want to fight for them.
Yeah, okay, Mario, stop your pontificating. Either you bring him back to advise us properly, or you don't. That's your business. You kick them out, you bring them back. And if you don't, I'm not going through this without legal counsel.
I'm not moving forward with the meeting without a council. Okay, we have enough lawsuits. We can't do this.
Is he back on?
Mario, Mayor, I'm, I'm, let's, I think we should, I'm good with Marinello.
He's coming back in.
Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with him coming back in.
Well, then you shouldn't kick him out.
No, no, he gets kicked out when he misbehaves, okay?
That's not how it works, Mario.
It does work that way.
That's not how it works.
There's nothing that says I have to put up with this.
Okay, it's nothing that says you can't.
Mayor, it only works with a dysfunctional council, okay? You set the tone, and this is not the, this is not what the taxpayers deserve.
Well, when, when you do secret, we have to deal with you, okay? And that's what we're doing right now.
You know, members of the public, just so you understand, the council people are up there, and we don't, we're not legalities, right? Some of us are, some of us aren't, but some of us don't know municipal law. That's what we have a borough attorney to help us and advise us. And I'm not continuing without that.
You won't even show your face on the video, and neither would you.
Listen, if you miss me that much, I'm so glad, but I don't really miss you that much. You'd be, I'd be more than happy to see nothing up there.
You're an elected official of Englewood Cliffs. People deserve to see you at a meeting.
They have seen me over the 12 years I've been involved, Mario. It's okay.
What is wrong with you?
Nothing's wrong with me, my friend. I'm so glad you missed me, though.
It's not that I miss you. It's that I want to see who I'm talking to.
You know who you're talking to. You don't remember me? You forgot already?
Hi, everyone. Is, is, is Mr. Marinello back on?
Woo, he's not coming back. He doesn't, he doesn't appreciate being kicked off. I will be taking the vote. Councilperson Faro?
Yes.
Savari?
It's an improper motion.
That's fine. I'll take my chance. Councilperson Savari? Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Oh?
No.
Sung?
No.
Aversa?
Billy, are you sure you want to make that motion? Because you know it's not even close to correct, right? Your dates, your date is completely wrong.
Dude, I made a mistake. I said July.
So, based on that date, I vote no because your motion was stupid. So, I vote no.
Ed, Ed, the only mistake that was on, with what I said.
I voted already, Billy. It's okay.
It was at the June 10.
Three times, if you're sure you wanted to keep that, you said yes. I say no because it's not correct.
It's the same motion from last month.
It's last month's meeting. I said last month, July 10.
I know. We're not even to July 10 yet.
And it's about you, and you're conflicted, and you're still voting.
For all I know, you could have been talking about last year's July 10 meeting.
I said last.
I vote no. For the third time, I vote no.
I think he clarified it.
Doesn't matter. It's still on the record of what he said.
Yeah, I said, I said, I said last month's meeting, July 10. It should have been last month's meeting, June 10, and I vote yes.
I was waiting on Councilman Aversa's vote.
And I said no.
He said no.
It's not, it's not a proper motion anyway, so no.
And Councilperson Wu?
For the record, I said last month's meeting, July 10. I meant last month's meeting, June 10, and my vote is yes.
Okay.
It's Savari who.
Okay, I make a motion to end the meeting because.
Councilwoman Savari is there.
It's tied, so I vote yes.
It's not tied. It's 3-2. What, how do you count?
Come on, can you do math?
What's the matter? You can't count, Mario? 3-2, 3-2. Let me get, let me get you an advocate.
Come on, guys, practice a little bit before you do this.
No, no, I, I saw Jimmy. He had conflict, and he voted to abstain.
What are you talking about? Calculator, whatever you need, Mario, we'll get for you. Whatever you.
So, I make the motion to end the meeting.
Should we give you a calculator?
We don't have legal counsel present. Anybody second that, keep attacking me, but I'm fighting for the.
Councilman Aversa.
You're not fighting for anybody. You're fighting for yourself.
On this agenda. Unless we require a legal matter, I would suggest moving along.
We're here to do business.
I got muted again from the mayor. Thank you.
We can't, we can't move forward with the meeting.
Poor behavior.
Mayor.
So, uh, next item up on the agenda is payment of claims, resolution 20-102. These are claims from June 11, 2020 to July 8, 2020. The amount is $1,111,811.15. Anything in here going to, um, any of our affordable housing professionals, I object to. That said.
Mayor, um, I want to mention, I know in the past couple of meetings, per my request earlier this year, uh, we had separated the affordable housing expense. Uh, I just want to ask the borough administrator why that was removed for this month.
It's there.
Yes, it's there because it was sent out like 15 minutes before the meeting, the meeting.
Actually, no, it was a, it was a quarter to 6:00 when Mrs. Romano gave me the information.
Quarter to 6:00, that, yeah.
We could do that.
Okay.
Let's have a vote and then go back to public portion. I want to make sure we can get this.
Uh, I have, I need a motion. I need a motion to payment of claims.
I said so moved.
All right, thank you. I need a second.
Again.
Councilperson Faro?
Yes to everything except, uh, no to the affordable housing lawyers.
Did you, did you look at the bill list? They were not on there.
Uh, yes, I saw it. It's $73,000.
But did you look at the bill list, Councilman?
Oh, yes. Yes, I didn't see it. I, I didn't see their name in there, but I see that you placed, uh, $73,000.
It's other matters regarding affordable housing. It's other individuals. The affordable housing attorneys are not on there.
Well, that's a little bit confusing. That's why I said you just send it like, uh, like 15 minutes before the meeting.
Sorry, in fairness to Councilman Pharaoh, Lizette, I was also confused by this. I looked at the payment list. I didn't see any of the attorneys on there.
Correct.
But then I got this later, which Councilman Pharaoh is referring with $74,000, and that it's for other matters with affordable housing. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. The special master, the special master, the judge that was appointed by Judge Farrington, and I believe Mike Mistrata's invoices are there, but the affordable housing attorneys are not. And if you looked at the bill list, you would see the names.
Where, what was the special master listed under?
Her law firm, her office. She's not an attorney.
Yeah, I don't think I recognized what line item that was.
Um, I don't have that with me. Lonigan. Give me a minute. I will look. So Harbor Consultants is on there. Clark, Katon, Hints, page two, Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you. Now I see them. Yes, thank you.
So Clark, Katon, Hints, Harbor Consultants, and I believe there were a few Harbor Consultants. So if you add them up, it comes out to $73,000. But like I said, the affordable housing attorneys did not submit their invoices in time for payment.
Clark was only, just to mention to you, Clark was about $5,000, and Harbor was a total of $20,000. There was $10,000 credit because I think it looks like a double payment there. So all I see here is $10,000, but the actual.
I will go through the list if you give me a second. So Harbor is there. Gallio, Galliopa, I believe is the name.
Who is Galli? That's the hearing officer, correct?
Yes. And then there's the attorney, Parizo, that was also appointed by Judge Farrington. And that's the bill that we are splitting in half between us and 800 Silver.
Galio, I don't see Galio or Ariza. Those two, I'm also not familiar.
I just.
And, you know, I don't want to make, again, we're just trying to be, we want to be fair to our public, let our public know there was $74,000 spent. We, as council people, we need to take full responsibility for all of the expenses that are going out, taxpayer dollars.
Well, Billy, what do you think about the mayor suing the four Democratic council people?
The mayor took.
That's going to cost the taxpayer money.
Well.
No, let him speak, mayor.
No, I mean, the mayor.
You don't need to tell him what to say. Let him speak.
Yeah, let Mike Pence speak.
The mayor can speak for his case. However, what I saw was the final result, and I read it, and it's still to be heard. So that's what I saw, Councilman O. Woman up.
Counsel, no, these are your own actions.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, mayor. Let's make a vote to pay the court.
I'm still, Ms. Councilman Aversa, just $74,000 and $15,000 is a big gap. I'd like to understand the $60,000 difference listed under affordable housing.
I need to plug in, so you didn't need. Do you need yourself to know that? I need to plug in. The clerk is still checking.
Okay, I see the line item. Lizette, there's a $54,000 line item for Chiesa Shaheenian, who is our litigator. So, you know, the initial list, that's the big line item right there, Chiesa.
Which page, Councilman?
Um, let me see here. It's four or five pages in. One, two.
Because I didn't see it.
How did that happen? The initial list didn't have them on it.
Sure it did. Absolutely. Oh, okay. I was looking for Trappner's. Fifth page. I'm trying to find the other one.
I have them. It's 54,000 plus.
No, the other one is Corzio from Rockford.
Which one?
So it's the page after Chiesa.
Yep.
My apologies. I was looking for Trappner's name. This was on the original list I sent earlier this morning.
Yeah, I was just thrown off, Lizette, by the.
No problem.
Agenda, which didn't have it. I still, okay.
Okay. Counselperson Pharaoh, you voted yes. No to the affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yes, right. I voted no. Yes on the rest.
Okay. Sabari?
I think she's having some technical difficulties.
Okay. I'm going to mark her as absent then. O?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes to all except the affordable housing, in particular, Chiesa.
No problem.
$54,000 bill for me.
Okay, mayor, I want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting because we don't have legal counsel.
I second the motion, mayor.
To the next scheduled monthly meeting?
No, we still have things to do.
Look, I made the motion. I'm not saying we don't have legal counsel. I'm sorry.
And we have to do the Witty Field.
I understand, Mario. I understand.
You kicked him off the meeting. We cannot go on, okay?
He's locked the door. You know, and I said.
The motion is, I don't feel comfortable, group.
I don't feel comfortable either.
You're playing games, and the two of you could get off if you want.
I don't want to be sued again. I do not feel comfortable.
And I don't feel comfortable with you, Mario.
And it's your fault, Mario.
Against me. I don't feel comfortable with it without legal counsel.
You need legal advice. You could call him, right?
There's a motion and a second.
And a motion, please take a roll call, clerk.
Hold on a second. Let me talk, all right? Stop talking over me. These are all items that he approved. So stop playing around.
I don't feel comfortable. That's all. Just me.
The way you're supposed to, okay? Enough of this.
Mayor, there's a reason why we have to have a council meeting, okay?
Stay on the meeting.
I agree, you know.
Mayor, mayor.
I understand there's a motion on the floor, but based on the meeting we've had to date, wouldn't we have public comments?
Doesn't matter. There's a motion and a bill to.
We just adjourned the meeting.
I'm just saying adjourn it.
We just adjourned.
Till we get over the problem of the next scheduled council meeting. Clerk, that's the motion on the floor. There's a second. Please take a roll call.
Take the roll call. As long as there's a.
Mayor, you should have thought about this before you kicked him off.
Attorney should have thought about it before he attacked me.
We cannot have a meeting without our legal counsel. You're putting the whole town at the risk.
You want to go, whatever you got to do. Go ahead. No, we're not stopping.
Take a roll call, clerk.
The attorney himself put all these items on the agenda.
I have a different comment. I'd just like to have public session. There's no attorney needed for that. That's my comment.
And I suggest O and Aversa, you calm down a bit and you figure out where you want to be tonight. You're on the.
The motion, the motion is on the floor, mayor. You don't have to like it.
You're supposed to be here doing work for this town, not doing whatever you are. We don't even see you, Ed. We have no idea where you are. You stay here.
He's here. He's here, mayor. You could see him. He's here.
Enough of this. Grow up, everybody. He's not going to like it.
You grow up. I'm kicking people off the meeting. Stop muting people.
Just because we could see you, you think that you're doing a great job by kicking off the attorney?
I have a motion to open to the public.
Like, who does that? What mayor does that?
There's a motion on the floor.
What mayor does that at a mayor council meeting, kicking off the legal counsel?
If you want to attack me on one thing, I won't throw you out, but you can have your lawyer attacking me.
Oh, shame on you, mayor.
I didn't sign up for that. You know, I'm the only volunteer here. This guy's getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars, and he feels like.
We're all volunteers here.
He should think about resigning is what he should really.
You know what? Then you should think about resigning if you're complaining about not getting paid.
Right now.
Everybody, I'd like to, I'd like to just, I'd like to have public comment. Hopefully, Democrats, we can all agree on this issue. I don't think there's borough attorney is needed for that, and I think the meeting has to have public session.
Lizette, are you going to take the motion, the vote or not?
Yes, I need a second.
Okay, you got a second. I made the motion. Gloria, second.
And I made, no, I second the motion.
We have to let the public speak. You're violating open public meetings, Ed. You're having a meeting right now. You've taken action. They have the right.
And we are closing the meeting, Mario, because we do not have legal counsel.
Adjourned the meeting because you screwed up, mayor.
It's your fault.
No, not at all. Not at all.
Yes, it is, Mario.
By law, that says the lawyer has to be at the meeting, okay? Nothing. So stop making things up.
I don't feel comfortable.
You've been on the council for 10 years.
The council doesn't have to vote my way, mayor. It's just my opinion. I don't feel comfortable.
Lizette, please take the vote.
Open to the public. There's no requirement that there be a lawyer present.
It doesn't matter, Mario. There's a motion, a second. You can decide what you want when you get a chance to vote.
The agenda says that we have to open to the public. You are violating the open public meeting.
You violated that when you took our attorney away from us.
You violated by kicking off the council from this meeting, mayor.
You know what? If the council's going to be rude to me, I don't have to put up with that, just like I don't have to put up with other people being rude to me.
Lizette, please take the vote so we can move on or not?
I am here for the town, okay?
No, you're not. You're there for yourself.
The town has the right to speak. You should let the town people speak, okay? The citizens.
Mario, stop muting me, Mario.
Stop yelling over me.
Stop muting me. I had the floor. I made a motion, and there was a second.
I am putting the meeting into recess for five minutes. We'll be back.
I don't care what you do. Lizette, take the vote. You're doing it again.
We are going to have a move.
No, we are not, Mario.
There's nothing in the bylaws or resolutions or anywhere.
It doesn't matter.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. The council will decide, Mario.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
The council.
That's how it works, Fidel.
We have an agenda. We are at a duly constituted meeting. We have a court.
We are. Exactly. And we are following our rules of order.
We are going to continue.
You're going to follow the rules the way you're supposed to, Mario.
We are following the rules. The next.
Then follow them.
Business was public.
Lizette, are you going to take a vote or not?
Yeah.
We have important business to finish, and you need to stay on board to do this.
I don't have a roll call.
We have police officers to hire, and we.
I'm waiting for the roll call.
No, no, we have to stay on and get through the agenda.
Your actions have consequences.
For you to be. Go do it. Come back.
At the minimum, we should be opening to the public.
At the minimum, we should take a roll call because there's a motion, a second.
At a minimum.
You know the rules.
The mayor should not kick anybody off.
Borough attorney is only relevant for the resolutions.
Maybe to you. To me, he's very relevant, Bill. I'm sorry you don't agree with that, but you'll have a right to vote your way when the vote.
Look, we have police officers to be hired tonight. We have promotions.
Stop muting me, Mario.
I'm speaking.
You did it for the fourth time tonight, fourth time.
Let me finish. We have police officers to hire, and we have promotions to make. We have application for Witty Field. These are important things for the public.
I understand that, and we need legal counsel in case I have a question, Mario.
Joe Marinello was the one who actually approved all these items on the agenda. So stop playing games.
I don't have that, I don't have that chance to talk to him about it. You took that choice away from me, Mario.
That's not true, Ed. You could color it however you want because you play games. There's business to be done, and I'm tired of looking at a black box with your name on it because it's ridiculous that you can't.
I know. You know what? Go buy a picture of myself and go put it on your mirror. But in the meantime, Lizette, please take the roll call.
To be hired.
If this council decides that they don't want to agree with it, that's their opinion? That's the fifth time, Mario.
He should be. You know what? We don't need him. You've done this.
Lizette, please take the roll call.
Hello? Hello? Who's on right now? Sabari, is she on?
No, she's having trouble.
She hasn't been on for like an hour. Song is still on. Ed, I suggest you leave if you don't want to be part of this, okay?
No, there's a motion.
There's a motion.
Councilman Aversa and Councilman O, we do have some resolutions that we need to have adopted tonight. I am asking.
Lizette, Lizette, the mayor should have thought of that before he took.
Stop playing games, Ed.
I know there's a motion.
That's six times, Mario, you're muting.
Ed, stop playing games. There's business to be done.
And I understand that. You should realize that.
Hello?
But not here.
You should realize that, Mario, and not do that.
We are here to do business, Ed. We have to open to the public. We have to hire two police officers.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. If this council chooses not to vote for it, that's their opinion.
You withdraw that motion, Ed.
I will not.
Save yourself the.
Motion's on the floor. Run the meeting the way you're supposed to, rub its rules and take the vote.
We are running the meeting the way we're supposed to.
And Joe would still be on here.
No, no, Joe was rude. So Joe is.
Good answer, Jim. Stop it.
No, Joe is rude. I don't have to put up with that.
Are you being rude? Can we kick you off then? Can we kick you off the meeting?
He's here for our benefit.
I heard you were running the debate a few years ago.
Cancel. There are some resolutions that need to be adopted tonight.
Lizette, are you going to take the motion or second, Lizette?
I understand that. Councilman Aversa, Councilman Aversa, with all due respect, we have two. How can we expect things? I'm sorry. Whoever speaks, please, that's not on the council. We have some resolutions that need to be adopted tonight. We have two officers, wonderful candidates. If we don't adopt the resolutions, hiring them tonight, one of them will not be able to go to the police academy. We have a resolution on the agenda for funding for improvements to Witty Field. If we don't approve the resolution tonight, we lose the funding. So I respectfully ask if you please take back your motion, open to the public, and let's continue.
I am not without legal counsel. I'm sorry, especially hard in office, especially with all that.
Prepare this agenda.
Mayor, I have a suggestion. Why don't you get in touch with the borough attorney and get him back on? Because I really don't feel comfortable moving forward.
Is the borough attorney not reachable by cell phone? What's going on?
He just spoke. So if there's a question, you can call him. If there's a question of legal significance, just tell me, and we'll pause.
No, mayor, mayor, there is a reason why.
Gloria, stop speaking when I'm speaking. You'll have the floor after me. She just, the clerk just spoke with the attorney. If you have questions, you could call him also. We'll pause the meeting. But the clerk and the attorney are the ones that prepared this agenda. Because remember, I wanted to add things that you rejected, okay? So let's get through the meeting. I understand you're all upset because I removed Joe Marinello because he was rude to me, and he deserved to be removed. I don't have to put up with that. If you have a question, tell me. We will pause the meeting for as long as you need, and you could call the attorney and ask him whatever questions you have because he's on the phone with Lizette right now, okay? Let's go. Have a motion to open.
No, 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 no. That doesn't work that way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you.
If he's not at the meeting, if he's not here at the meeting, then I don't, I'm not participating.
I'm, Councilman Aversa.
The motion still stands. I'm not withdrawing my motion.
There is, I'm trying to contact the borough attorney.
Lizette, please take the vote.
We should be able to get the attorney back on, please. We should be able to get the attorney back on. Please, let's just get that.
That's seven times the meeting, Mario, seven times.
Oh, Ed, there's 80 people on this.
Then they should all know what you did.
And all you're doing is delaying the. We could be doing.
No, you delayed it, Mario.
You delayed this. You delayed this.
You should understand.
You caused this.
I'm not a lawyer.
You don't need to have a lawyer here. He's the one that prepared this agenda.
To advise me when there's a legal question. This mayor has sued me multiple times and I am not moving forward without legal counsel.
You know, Ed, it's.
Mario, you haven't won once. So that's your business, but you keep suing me. So I'm gonna make sure that I make the right decisions.
You're conflicted.
Whether you like it or not, Mario, that's my opinion.
I'm here to uphold the rule of the law, Ed, even for you.
Well, no, it's your law, the way you see it. Just like you, you muted me seven times, seven times tonight. You took away my right, my First Amendment right to speak.
Right now, there are 12 resolutions that need to be considered and the public.
Then you should have thought of that before you took away my right.
What, I don't have to tiptoe around your lawyer, your bulldog. I don't need.
You should respect me and my decision whether you like it or not. And my opinion is I'm not moving forward with any of these resolutions without legal counsel.
He's on the phone. He'll stay on the phone while we're doing this.
No, that's not how we work, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor.
In the meeting with the rest of us.
You started us the other day. Do you want us to trust you? Like, I don't trust you. We cannot move forward without the legal counsel.
Members of the public, I apologize to you for this, but if you were in my. Eight times, Mayor, eight times you muted me.
Councilman Aversa, I do have Mr. Marinello on the phone. So he's here.
I, I can't hear. What?
Marinello will be on the phone with the clerk.
Well, I don't, I don't hear him on the phone. I don't hear anybody.
He's on the phone with the clerk. He will stay on. If he's needed, you could speak to him as well.
No, 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 no. I don't trust you, Mario.
Invite him back in the room. Invite him back in the room. You complain about, you complain about Ms. Councilman Aversa not showing his face. I want to be able to talk to my attorney. I, I don't want him on the phone. I want him in the room.
He's the one who wrote the agenda. He's the one who prepared the resolutions that you'd be voting on. You're playing games.
I'm not playing any games, Mario. I'm telling you how I feel.
Okay, 80 people see you playing games.
Okay, well, I saw the attorney being rude to me. My attorney, our attorney, the town's attorney, out of the meeting.
Because he was rude.
You were not rude today.
I am an attorney.
I'm not making it.
I've been practicing law for 30 years and I would never speak to a client the way he speaks to me. Okay? That's the way it is.
All right, then that's the way it is. I understand your, I understand you. I hear you.
And we have business to conduct.
Hear me. Unless he's back in the meeting, I, I, my motion stands.
Well, you could speak to the clerk, okay? Because she's speaking to him. All right?
I made my motion. It stands.
You could speak to the clerk because she's actually got him on the phone.
Councilman Aversa, Councilman Aversa, I have Mr. Marinello on the other line. He's not part of this, he's not part of Zoom, but I have him on the other line.
Well, why can't he be part of Zoom? I'm confused.
He's, he's not gonna come back on to get kicked off again if I.
Then, then that's the problem. So the motion stands.
Well, she could put him on speaker and she could put him on, on microphone and you could hear him.
No, we're not doing it that way, Mayor.
What is she, what is she doing?
Is it, is it?
Lizette, is it the borough attorney not wanting to come on or?
Is he quitting?
I think he does.
No, he's not quitting, Councilman Farrell.
Well, is he coming back to the meeting?
The meeting should be open for him to come on to.
Then let the mayor run it back in.
Let me explain. Councilman, Councilman Aversa, I mean Councilman Wu, when you get kicked off a meeting, when you get kicked off, you can't get back on. If you fall off, that's a different story. So he's on the line in case I need him, but he is on the line.
Okay, so if people want to be reasonable, we continue with the meeting. If people want to be unreasonable.
Why? I'm, I'm, what? Is he in the meeting? Yes or no? That's my, that's my answer.
He's, he's here, he's here with me. I can't fucking believe it.
Listen, I, listen, it's up to the council members. That's my, that's my opinion.
Take a vote.
Take a vote. If, if they vote, no, that's okay. You know, I don't understand what the problem is.
If they vote no.
Then the meeting ends. That's the motion that's on the floor.
Right, Councilman Wu was able to make his motion. He made it, we voted. I made my motion. What's the problem?
Let's make it clear. The attorney is on with the clerk. We have business to conduct. We have two officers to hire. We have promotions to make. We have trust fund application for Witty Field to make. And there's other matters. And the public needs to speak before we adjourn. Otherwise, the whole meeting violates the Open Public Meetings Act.
You want to violate, you're talking about opening, you're kidding me, right, Mario, right now? You violate the Open Public Meetings Act by muting me eight times tonight.
Stop it.
Eight times. And you violated the Public Meetings Act by kicking out the borough attorney. So you're gonna worry about that?
Ed, this is a bad time for politics, okay?
I'm not politicking, Mario. I don't worry about that stuff. Obviously you do.
You and your lawyer are gonna attack me. I dealt with it.
Ridiculous.
He's with the clerk. You could go forward based on the fact that he's the one who prepared all these resolutions.
No, no. There's a motion. There's a second on the floor, Mayor.
After 10 years, you need to have a lawyer hold your hand during a council meeting at every step of the way, then you are pathetic, okay?
Mayor, Mayor, there's a reason why the, the attorney's not in the Zoom room with us because you kicked him off.
Well, he actually, this is.
You kicked him off. Okay, so I feel comfortable moving forward with the meeting, especially in the light that you just served me the other day. You're suing me and you're asking me.
He basically left the meeting himself, okay? I didn't kick him out. I muted him.
You kicked him out, Mario. You said you kicked him out.
Honestly, I didn't. I thought it was.
Your, your actions have consequences, Mayor.
Yes, you're.
We, I, I, I'm not feeling comfortable moving forward.
You don't need to have a lawyer to have a meeting.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Nope, it's not in any law. It's not in any bylaw.
You just made that up.
No, it's not. But that's okay, Mario. That's, that's your opinion. I made a motion because I don't feel comfortable. If the other council members feel comfortable, that's up to them.
You want to hurt the police department.
I do not. Of course, they know that. You know that.
You want to hurt them by not having this meeting continue. You go right ahead and do what you think is right.
I want my legal, I want my borough attorney here to help me and advise me. It's like I have for every meeting I've ever attended for 11 years at Angler Cliffs Borough Council.
Yeah, because.
That's not gonna change my. Especially in light of a current lawsuit from you against me. So I, I'm sure the public would certainly understand my, my shortcomings in that area.
You, you do have a lot of shortcomings, Ed, and I think one of them is that you put politics before business.
If you want to say so, Mario, that's your opinion.
Business of the meeting is to get through the meeting and to do the work.
I agree. I wish we could do that on a regular basis, get to every meeting.
Right now, and quite frankly, I'm disappointed that even you can't see your way to continue this meeting without being political.
It's okay. It's, you're, you're entitled to your opinion, Mario. I don't get upset at that. I get upset when I get muted eight times.
There's resolutions. There's nine resolutions that need to be dealt with.
I understand that.
And you are holding up the town right now by not.
No, Mario, you are holding up the town and you are denying me the right to legal counsel.
He could come back whenever he comes. He doesn't want to come back the way you want him to be back, and he can't. So unfortunately.
So then you're, you're the one denying him from coming back.
He's on the phone with Lizette. You, you're free to call him also. You're free to have him on the line yourself. I really don't care. So is Gloria.
Mayor, that's not how things work.
Motion on the floor.
That's not how things work, Mayor, okay?
I'm sorry you feel that way, Mario. I'm sorry you're so stubborn that you can't invite the guy back into the meeting.
You're gonna hurt.
Mayor, let me say something. Let me say something. You're saying that you kicked off the council because he was being rude to you. But what about you to the rest of the council? You're the one that's really rude, okay?
What world are you living in, Gloria? You don't like what I have to say about affordable housing. You don't like what I have to say about Al Wunsch. You don't like what I have to say about corruption and racism, but I say it.
Corruption? What corruption? You have any facts to support?
You know what? Take your vote and you hurt the police department.
Take the vote.
Go ahead, hurt the police department. You shouldn't do that. It's terrible.
Take the vote.
Take the vote. End the meeting. And don't do the business that you're trying to do.
We're, we're adjourning. The, the motion is to adjourn the meeting, Mario.
We're adjourning it because you, you messed it up, Mayor.
You have nine items to, to vote on tonight. You have the public that must speak tonight.
That's right. So we made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You know why? I bet because you're trying to settle the affordable housing.
Ed, Ed.
That's probably why you want to do this.
Councilman Aversa, can we just have public session?
No, because if the public asks us something that I need legal counsel on, I can't answer. So no.
Stop it.
The motion's on the floor. And there's a second.
It could take a roll call.
I, I just don't want to be violating the Open Public Meetings Act with no public session.
Well, we could be violating it with it nine times that he muted me too and the time that he kicked out our legal counsel.
You're violating the other.
Really? That's a weak argument, my friend.
Ed, you're violating, if you ask for this meeting right now, if you adjourn it, you are violating the Open Public Meetings Act, okay? That's what you're doing. And also, you're depriving two officers of being hired. You're depriving the police department of having promotions.
No, no, see, that's how you see it, Mario. I see it as you're denying them that.
Well, actually, I'm going to.
That's absolutely correct. Because you're self-serving, Mayor. You're self-serving and you're playing off of your emotions and you're claiming that your attorney was being rude.
Here's the thing. We have to have an orderly meeting, okay? We have to have an orderly.
That's 10 times you muted me, by the way.
As much as you don't like being orderly, we have to do this, okay? We have to have a meeting. We have to do business. And if you don't like what I have to say, don't scream over me. Wait for your turn. Just like Debbie Sabari did earlier. She waited. We spoke. Jimmy spoke. You and Ed, Gloria, think that because you've been here 10 years, you get to do whatever you do. 10 years of nothing. Get off.
Okay, are you done now?
Take a roll call, Mario. Enough.
I don't do roll calls, ever.
Lizette, take the roll call, please.
What's the, what's the motion that you're voting on?
The motion is to adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Are you kidding?
No, they're not kidding. They're not doing their jobs. The public out there.
I don't know who that was.
They want to adjourn the meeting, everyone, which is ridiculous. They don't want to do their jobs.
I want to do my job with legal counsel.
We need legal counsel, Mayor.
Call your attorney right now. We'll take a break. Call your attorney and have him on the phone.
I told you what you need to do, Mario. You don't want to.
I've given you.
Lizette, take the motion. Take the vote, Lizette, please.
Out of this hole, okay? I've given you every opportunity. Why don't you just take one, okay?
Why don't you take one, Mario? Invite him back in.
He's invited. He can come back in whenever he wants.
Yeah.
He's with Lizette right now and he.
You kicked him out.
He was kicked out.
You kicked him out. Right? Just like you muted me 10 times tonight.
I thought I was muting him, but the guy was actually being rude and I don't have to put up with being rude.
That is hilarious coming from you.
Based on that ridiculous statement that he just made, take the vote.
Take the vote and hurt the town. Put your own politics first than like Gloria's.
I just want to clarify, just in Zoom, the invite under participants, is that not actionable?
I, I just, how do we know? We don't have legal counsel here, Billy. That's a great question.
Good question, Bill.
Good question, Billy. You just made my point. Thank you.
And you know what? That's the reason why we need the council. Because none of us could give advice on that. So take a roll call. Let's go. If we need to have a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting, but I, I don't want to move forward without the council, okay? We have enough lawsuits and, and our own mayor is suing me. So I'm not moving forward with this meeting without legal counsel.
Thank you.
Take a roll call.
It's always about you. It's never about the town.
Take a roll call. Let's go.
So that's the adjournment. Lizette, you're gonna take the roll call? You have to 10 times.
Don't do it. Why are you being rude to Lizette?
I'm asking her to take it.
We could have a special meeting, but I'm not moving forward with this.
It would be too late. I don't want to give up another night, but I understand that. I feel, I don't feel comfortable without legal counsel. I mean, Jesus, I don't know what else I have to tell you.
Ed, let me tell you again. Your attorney.
Just take the vote.
Your attorney wrote the resolutions.
I understand, Mario.
Doesn't matter, Mayor.
I hear you, but, but Councilman Wu made an excellent point. He just asked a question none of us have an answer to. So that's exactly what I'm talking about. It's a simple question, but I don't know.
That's a, that's a technical issue. That's not as.
I understand that, but there may be 100 technical questions between now and the end of the meeting. So, so just, next time, don't kick him out.
Go take a deep breath. Take a timeout.
You take a timeout, Mario. I'm good.
I want to do business, Ed. I want to get these resolutions passed and done.
Then next time, you'll think about it before you mute people, kick people out and act like a four-year-old.
No, no, that's not true.
All right, but that's your opinion. It's okay. I understand your opinion and I under, I get it.
No, Ed.
I made mine. The council could vote and decide what they want.
I don't have to be abused by your people, Ed.
Lizette, please take a roll call.
That's 11 times you muted me, Mario, 11.
And if he's not coming back because he's too.
Lizette, please take the vote. Lizette, are you there, Borough Administrator? Hello?
I'm here, Councilman.
Are we gonna take the vote or not?
Debbie.
What?
Lizette, are we taking the vote or not?
Councilperson Farrell.
What was that? Which one are we taking?
It's to adjourn the meeting to the next scheduled meeting.
For your respect.
No.
Okay. Next person.
Hello?
Councilperson Sabari.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You know, this, this is a real shame what's happening here. I'm gonna, yes.
Thank you.
You're hurting the police officers.
Oh, yes. Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
You're all a joke.
Shame on you. You're a disgrace.
Are you?
What are you hiding? I mean, why do you need legal counsel?
Why is the public unmuted?
No, they're unmuting themselves.
We, we've been muted all night by the mayor. So I don't understand exactly why it's okay.
You're muting us right now, Democrats. You're muting us right now.
No, we're being muted.
What are you guys trying to hide behind?
Lizette, continue to vote, Lizette.
Councilperson Aversa.
I said yes.
Hello?
No.
You are shutting our voices down. Shame on you.
Thank you, Lizette. Close the meeting up. We'll adjourn it to the next time. Thank you.